I hereby call to order the strictly scheduled meeting of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Let's get started with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we take a, can I hear me all right? As we take a moment of silence tonight, it is with great sadness that I share that Kill Devil Hills has lost a trusted public servant. I ask that everyone keep the family of J.B. Christ in your thoughts and prayers. J.B.'s life has been dedicated to a long and distinguished career of public service to multiple fire departments, including ours. He joined our fire department as a volunteer in 2005, and his service has been exemplary. His colleagues always describe him as dedicated, willing to share or help anyone with any need. And they said that he's always one of the first responding to the station during emergencies. So we offer our deepest condolences to his wife Susan and his son A.J., who is one of our career firefighters here, and his wife Hannah and their family. So with that, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Good to see people in the audience after a long, long COVID winter, or whatever you can call it, COVID year. So welcome. Thanks for being here. First item of business board is the approval of the agenda. You delivered it last week. Had time to look over it. If you have any thoughts about it, otherwise we'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the agenda after a second.
All right, we have a motion to second and second here on the other end. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have an agenda. As folks in the audience probably know, we have three public hearings coming up tonight, and I'll hand the baton over to our attorney.
As the mayor said, there will be three public hearings conducted this evening by the Board of Commissioners for Kill Devil Hills. The following rules and procedure are going to apply to these hearings. A public notice was published within the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed by the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will be recording any oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing, and also shall be submitted and forwarded to the town clerk. If speaking, please limit your comments, of course, to matters which are relevant to the issue. And if speaking singly, to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement was submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement can be taped. And of course, there are no debates in a public hearing. When you come to the microphone, if you would, please identify yourself, name, and address for the record. The first public hearing will now come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. We've got nobody signed up. Anybody in the audience want to speak on item number one? Again, if you're here for another of the public hearings, you'll be given a chance to talk during those sessions.
All right, I know that we've had a couple of rounds to look at the budget, and we've had some discussions on it. We had a budget workshop a while back, and we're pleased to say that a lot of those great ideas that came out of that discussion ended up in the budget. We got a detailed look at it at our last meeting. And we've had some discussions in the interim about ways we can continue to improve it. So we'd like to start the discussion around those. One was about the adjustment to the code. Do you want to, anybody would like to speak on that topic? I'd run some discussion.
I would just share with the board that, you know, I am in favor of having an increase in that, the 3.6. And I would hope that staff could bring it back to us on the 23rd. But I'm very much in favor of the 3.6. I think it's in line with what needs to happen with the cost of living here and with the national average. And I think it's even higher from what we first looked at. So that would be my thought.
Mayor, I'll chime in as well. I agree with Commissioner Gray. I support that increase of 3.6% for all the reasons given.
I agree.
So just, there have been a lot of kind of one-on-one conversations and conversations with staff about just the incremental increase to salaries across the town. We're trying to both be in line with what the fiscal experts are saying and the town's finance staff has recommended, while also knowing it's a very unusual time, and we want to be supportive of the staff and how challenging it can be to live here and how challenging it is to predict anything with the budget this year. So I think you guys have gotten that message, and we will probably see that when we look at this one more time. For folks in the audience, the, anything that's updated with the budget that's already been public and presented will be brought back here on Wednesday, June 23rd, for our hopefully final consideration. We have some deadlines to meet coming up right after that, if that you understand, right? So other than that, I know we covered a lot of topics the last time. Anything else anybody like to discuss about it before we move on to the next item? I think Casey, back to you.
So now the second public hearing tonight is going to come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following amendments required as a result of West Carolina General Statute 160D. The amendments tonight are to Chapter 152 subdivisions and Chapter 153 zoning. Again, there is no one who has signed up. So anyone in the audience want to speak about amendments to our town code based on the requirements of General Statute 160D?
Sometimes public hearings whisk right along. You mentioned something earlier.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve Chapter 152 and 153. Can they be together? I'm sorry.
They can.
Can they be together? Okay. As it is consistent with North Carolina state law.
A motion and a second? Any further discussions? For the audience, we've gone over this kind of at length in the past as well. If you haven't been at other meetings or watched it, this is the final discussion on it. So without further ado, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. You're in this.
And there is a note in the documents or in your package tonight. Chapter 150 building regulations also has to be amended for some of the 160D, and that's coming back to you guys on June 23rd, which will allow us to meet the statutory requirements of having it approved and adopted by the specified time.
Yep, and then made public too, so we're good to go on all the rules there.
All right, so number three, again, our third hearing is now coming to order. In this particular case, the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners is going to be considering a proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. 153.177 conditional uses being to allow tattoo studios as conditional uses within the commercial zone. Again, I've got no one signed up. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this particular item, now would be the time to come up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Smith. I'm here on behalf of Banshee Tattoo with beautiful wife Cassandra, out in the audience with me. Me and her have an interest in opening up a tattoo studio in the town of Kill Devil Hills. And I spoke with Mr. Lang at length about getting the process started. And we started it, went down the road with it a little bit, got a hold of Mr. Cameron's son. We presented it to him, went through the planning board process, and here we are today. I think the, I think it would be an excellent addition to the town of Kill Devil Hills. I think we have a lot to offer. I think the town of Kill Devil Hills has a lot to offer us too. It'd be a new demographic coming into Kill Devil Hills, a new type of customer coming into Kill Devil Hills. We also want to be a part of Kill Devil Hills. Kill Devil Hills does an excellent job of providing a very family-friendly atmosphere. We would like to be a part of that. We would like to cooperate with Kill Devil Hills as best we can to do the same. When I first started the application process, the planning board was extremely helpful, very instrumental in helping me understand the process. It's a little bit of a different legal gambit than I'm used to typically. And me and Mr. Cameron spoke in length on the phone over a couple of issues that had arisen with other towns with similar demographics to Kill Devil Hills that allowed tattoo parlors and studios in the commercial zone. Some of those concerns, me and him addressed, and he came up with and presented the fact of a separation agreement, which would be 200 feet from public churches, town, or public churches, schools, parks, and libraries, which we totally agree with. 400 feet away from another tattoo establishment, which seems like a great idea to me, and limiting the hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And honestly, I'm not trying to work out for 10:00 p.m. either, if I can help it. I'm sure most of us are. But like I said, I've got three artists here with me today as well. They've got over 20 years of experience, and I think we have a lot to offer the town of Kill Devil Hills. And if given the chance, I do believe we could show the town of Kill Devil Hills what we can offer, and it would be a great relationship between the two of us. And we look forward to hopefully working with the town of Kill Devil Hills. Thanks, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up for being here and supporting us. And I'd like to thank the town for their time and consideration in this matter.
Anyone else want to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Thomas Lancaster. I reside on 207 Pine Grove Trail. I've been a resident of Kill Devil Hills for two years. I'm also a client of Cassandra's, and I fully support her endeavor. And that's not all I can say. I just wanted to come and show my support. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Tracy Porter. I actually live in Manio, and I'm a Garrett County employee. But I've been known Cassandra for several years now. She is what I consider a true artist, and what her and her coworkers do is truly a gift. It's, a lot of people look at tattoos in other ways, but actually it is an art form. And it's an art form a lot of us choose to wear on our bodies. So, and I think she's the utmost professional you can go see, and I fully support her, and so do several others here tonight. Thank you.
Come on up if you want to speak.
Good evening, I'm sorry. Good evening, Bill Gillen. Live back in 326 Collington. Just kind of want to reiterate, I am a client of Cassandra's, and I know historically tattoos might have been viewed as bringing the wrong crowd or something. But as a wearer of many of her pieces of art, it belongs on Gallery Road just as easily as anywhere else in the county. I was going to say, it truly is an art form, and I think it will draw a lot of tourists and everything. She does some beautiful seascapes, some beautiful lighthouses and such. And it'll be an asset to the town, in my opinion.
What else?
Jim Twitty, Nance Harbor. Hello, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since I've seen you.
Been a while.
Yes. I'm one of the three artists that are here and supported this shop. I've been tattooing for 15 years now. I've had the fortunate opportunity of lifetime to be able to teach the other two artists how to tattoo. We're not going to be your basic street shop. It's not gonna, you know, we're not going to attract any rowdy crowds. We're thinking of keeping just banker's hours. We're going to be appointment only, so there's not going to be a lot of people just like hanging around, interlipping, you know, if you don't belong, don't belong type deal. But I think this would be a good fit for KDH. I've worked in KDH for a long time. But yeah, so I got.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Ben Scott. I live in Manio. I'm best friends with one of the tattoo artists, Andy Twitty. He's one of my greatest friends, one of the best people I know. And, you know, growing up together, I know the idea of how he wants to conduct himself professionally and how he wants to affect culture and in this way, this conduit of art, of tattooing. And I think that that's an understated part of tattooing, is how the cultural relevance of it. And I know from his Instagram and conversations with him that there are people that come here just to get tattooed by him. And a place that is appointment only and not just a walk-in biker shop can be a really cool, I don't know if institution is the right word, but a place to have, especially in Kill Devil Hills, you know, it's right in the middle of everything. And, you know, I can't think of three better artists to be part of the team to launch that. And I think it offers a lot to Kill Devil Hills and the Outer Banks in general. But yeah, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Twitty, and I also live over in Nance Harbor. I just wanted to say, I think everything everybody has said so far has been great. One of the coolest parts about these three artists is that they all have lived here, some of them for their whole lives or forever. And they just want to see our entire Outer Banks and KDH be a better area. And they really want to see it grow and change with the times. And so I just think it's really cool to see people who are invested in their community want to make it better and bring it forward. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Two shops. Oh, there you go.
Hi, my name's Connor Twitty. I'm Jim's cousin, Andy's brother. I've been tattooed by all three of these people. They are the most professional people I've dealt with in a lot of professions in general. They're, they work very cleanly, very responsible with all of their equipment, you know, they open. I've seen some places, you know, they don't, they don't open their equipment in front of you. They make sure all of their stuff is sterilized, everything's brand new. Again, as everybody says, they're, you know, I think it'd be a good fit for Kill Devil Hills. It'd be just something different, because there's not many, we have the two shops here. Don't want to say anything negative about either one. It's, the private studio is just a good idea, because no rowdy crowds. They're out of there at a decent time. My brother has a one-year-old kid, you know, she's having the private studio. He can spend time with her and still do what he loves to do. Just want to show him support for all three of them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All ones go on twice? All right, that's the, we'll call that the end of the public hearing portion. So just to clarify a couple things before you, a little bit of discussion started. You know, this is a discussion on what uses of what kind of businesses can be in the town for the whole town, for all of the business, business area. It is not a discussion necessarily about a single shop. I do appreciate that everybody wants to come and support what is a great artistic community and, you know, a vibrant part of our culture, and support their friends, of course. So just to put that out there, the discussion is really about, you know, sort of a longstanding, continuing of the three towns along the beach have not allowed tattooing for many, many years. That's been fairly consistent. There were lots of voices on both sides 10 or 20 years ago the last time it was really brought up. So that's kind of the background of the, of the conversation. Going from there, I definitely want to hear from everybody on the board, your thoughts, and we can craft a way forward from here.
And I will start with a very un-commissioner-like statement and say that I'm probably the only one up here with a tattoo. This is coming from a place that, I love tattoos. I get, I get that. I get the culture. I do. But, so that being said, I do have concerns, as Ben mentioned, about this use in our commercial zone, as it just doesn't seem compatible with the existing commercial uses. So that being said, I did go over some things and did a lot of reading. And then reviewing the other uses in our town zoning districts, it could be that it's more compatible in our light industrial one zone, which is where we allow body piercings. And so based on compatibility of uses, and my concern, I don't want to speak for everyone, with this use in the commercial zone, I would like to recommend that we direct staff to take a look at allowing tattooing as a conditional, or allow, an amendment to allow tattooing as a conditional use in the light industrial one, where body piercings are also allowed. To me, that seems a little bit more consistent, and so that would be my recommendation.
That's along the same lines I was thinking as well. I would, I would think it fits better. You've got a pretty huge area in the commercial zone, and it's not allowed. So I think I'd be a little worried with that. I would support that.
Yes, I also agree with Commissioner Gray. I'd like to see the commercial zone stay as it is. And we think it's a better fit for that, that zone of the town. Certainly understand your entrepreneurial spirit. I appreciate that. I own my own business as well. I own another business, and a few alone businesses. A lot of us have owned businesses up here. And there's certainly nothing against tattoos or your, or your actual, your goals and desires to be, to, to be a business in this community. So, but that being said, I think it would be something that we'd like to see in that zone and not in the commercial zone, to stay consistent with the language, to stay consistent with the way we've been operating. The stance, obviously, you know, it's delicate balance in the community and the G L. Delicate balance with the, with the family environment, the tourism environment. Not that tattoos are compatible with that, but we are concerned about what, what could be, what could be opened up here if, you know, obviously it's not just your business we're speaking about. We're speaking about, once we open this up, it's all businesses.
Every 400 feet, that's what.
Yeah, every 400 feet, yeah.
I, I'll try to make quick, sorry.
No, that's, that's all I had to say.
But I, I support reading consistently plan with light industrial one. You know, for those who follow Kill Devil Hills' comings and goings and things that we've talked about on this board, I've worked hard for the last two years to really try to build consensus with folks so that, you know, we're not at odds over things that we really try to bring up, kinds of things that we can all be for at the same time. This issue has challenged that for me, because I'm a, I'm a big fan of tattoos, and all of my customers had tattoos, and all of my employees had tattoos for many, many years. And when I look at tattoos and the way they're seen by the public, I think that's evolved a great deal since the last time this was looked at, 20 years ago. I think 20 years ago, there were far fewer CEOs with tattoos, and far fewer football stars, and basketball stars, and movie stars, and people in positions of power and prestige that people look up to. That's a, that's a change. So I think that the world is going in the direction that tattoos, which used to be seen as subversive or somehow counterculture and in some way dangerous. I think those days are waning. And I'd be the first to say that I tend to be a little ahead of the curve on things like that. So I may be, I may be the one vote that goes the other way, which I do not like to do. I really like to vote with these guys most of the time. At the same time, I do, just to talk out of both sides of my mouth, I totally get the L.I. one idea, because I, I know my friends that are, you know, professional tattoo artists, they have reputations that are way beyond the Outer Banks, that people travel to get their work done. They have huge followings on social media and serious fandom in certain circles. Their art is valued higher and higher over time. It's, it's not something you do on the side. This is a profession. Not everybody can get into it. It takes real talent and lots of practice for years and years. So I think that it's quite respectable, and the arguments that it is not are real. Still, for a sizable portion of the population. So voting for what you're asking for, as I'll be, I may be the outlier here, I think that's the future, and I don't think this is a forever situation. You know, our neighboring towns also have prohibited tattoo parlors in the commercial zone for feelings of incompatibility, which really is about what is best for the whole community. There's a feeling among other businesses that will not be happy that I would vote in favor of such a thing. They would, there are plenty of people who would think that it would be of detriment to the community as a whole, or maybe just to their business if they were adjacent, or, or just because Kill Devil Hills would become less popular among a different kind of clientele, let's just say, folks that have different ideas of what they want to do on vacation. So I do want to be supportive, and I certainly support adopting the ability to do a L.I. one. Sure, I'd really like to see it in the whole town. I don't think it's a problem. So I just put all that out there to know that we, like I just mentioned in the beginning, this is not a referendum on any individual or anybody here. Or really, how any individual thinks about tattooing. It's really what these fine people think is best for the community, best for us in this moment, which is ever-changing, right?
And really what it's compatible with.
What's compatible with, right. So what we have now, what we've done in the past, compatible is, has to do with the path that we've come for all these years since the town became a town back in the 60s. So I have monologued longer than I'd like to. But I didn't want to rush the conversation or see if anybody else had any other points they'd like to make before we look for a vote. Now I'm looking for a motion.
I will make the motion to deny, but direct staff to look into the light industrial one.
I'll say.
Casey, is that perfect?
That's sufficient to achieve what you guys, or what you were speaking on earlier.
We have a motion and a second. Last chance any further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Thank you guys for being here, and thank you for what you're, what you're doing, and I hope this hasn't been too painful. Thank you all very much. Yes, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. This is public comment on any topic. We do this at the beginning and the end of a regular meeting. The, the public hearing portion is unusual. We don't do that all the time. So this is really the beginning of our regular meeting. So at this point, same sort of rules apply, three minutes for individual, five minutes for a group. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak a public comment, this is one of two more opportunities to do so.
And no one signed up yet.
No one signed up over here. All right. All right, there'll be.
Sure.
This is more of a question. Matt Walker, Fort Dan West Walker Street, can you give an example of the light industrial zone, just for curiosity's sake? Is that like, is that like Rasco and everything over in the, like, for the glass shops and stuff are?
Yes.
That's what I figured. So it's not that far off. It's not like it's out in the boonies necessarily. It's just tucked away a little more, a little more.
In my neighborhood.
That's a great question. We should.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
Just off the back.
It's light drive and fresh pond where.
In that area, yeah.
On the south side of town.
Lots of good businesses back there.
You're in LI2.
You're in LI2. Yeah, you're in LI2.
So it's on LI1.
Sorry, yeah.
I live on the south.
The south end of town.
South end of town.
South and west side.
County Valley, all that stuff down there. Yeah, Lake Drive, Fresh Pond.
Anybody remember Podscum? Used to have a whole bunch of bands that based themselves out of Fresh Pond. All right. So we will say no more public comment and no response to public comments. The next couple of items are presentations. The first one is from the College of the Albemarle.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jack Bagwell. I'm the president of the college and my lovely assistant this evening is Dean Tim Sweeney. Most of you know Tim. He's the Dare face of College of the Albemarle. So we've got a brief presentation to walk through with you. But I wanted to talk just a few minutes about what we've got going on so that you all know what's happening and you can help us drive students to the campus. Just as we were talking about, some of your family members may have avail themselves of what College of the Albemarle brings to the table. But I want to click through this fairly quickly. But before I jump in, I should probably tell you a little bit about College of the Albemarle so that you know the baseline information. I have been here through the pandemic. That's basically my experience with Outer Banks and Elizabeth City and the five other counties that we serve. We serve seven counties. This is service area. That's the largest service area. And the North Carolina Community College System, the North Carolina Community College System is the third largest community college system in the nation, 58 colleges. So we have the most serviced area. We have the most counties to serve. We have the most board members, 19 members of our board. And we have a broad swath of just the community to serve. We always like to say that we're the community's college, but the reality is we're more of a region's college. And we have four campuses. We have adopted the naming paradigm, COA Elizabeth City, COA Edenton Chuan, COA Currituck, and COA Dare. What I'm going to be talking mostly to you about today is COA Dare, the campus that we have down here in Manio. We are building a brand new building, if you've not seen it. And Dean Sweeney is the day-to-day administrator for our campus down here. So let me talk to you about what that's going to look like. We're building about a 36,000 square foot, $18 million building that's going to be the central hub of cultural, instructional, educational, maybe tourism activities. We're looking at the possibility of partnering on bringing a large conference down to the area in a few, maybe next year is what the conversation is. I don't know if that will play out. But we're going to open this building to as many opportunities as we can. It's going to be really that town in gown that you hear about in many university towns or college towns, where a hot skip and a jump from downtown Manio, easily walked, biked. And we're going to have, as you see in this picture, an amphitheater and some seating areas, which will make really a nice venue for some town activities, plays, performances, whatever the town would like to do and the county would like to do. I'm going to show you several elevations of this, the south side, looking basically at the south side of the building as you're coming up from, I guess, what is that, 64 to town? And you'll see this part of the building first. I'm going to click through this pretty quickly so that you can see several things that's going on. But if you know about our location down there, we've got two locations now. And we are combining all of that into this building and we're revamping the current building that's on the campus and looking for the future growth of COA Dare. So you're going to see that it has a lot of fantastic student space, a lot of instructional space that we can use. I'll show you the inside just a little bit. This is the north side of the building as you're looking from, you're coming from downtown Manio back out. And the other building that you see back there on that campus is the existing building. That's our professional arts building. It's a little bit misnamed because we do certainly do jewelry making and art, different art programs and pottery sometimes. But really, we've got welding, HVAC, we're putting some of the trades in there. We've got some partnerships with the Outer Banks Builders Association, and they're helping us with some activities that are going to help us do more trades-related programming. But this is going to be a fantastic addition to the county, to the community, to College of the Albemarle. You see, this doesn't look like the college buildings I went to school in. You know, we might have had a bench in the hallway to gather in. But today, students are looking for opportunities to be somewhere where they feel special with bright, vibrant colors, a lot of community spaces for learning. You see TVs on the walls. We'll have some collaboration spaces. It's going to be where people can sit, reflect on what they've just heard, and communicate with their fellow college student. Or if we're having a conference or some activity, certainly folks can gather and talk and reflect and community build, which is another mission of the community college. As we look at the color schemes, obviously, we're going to make sure that there's alignment between what's happening in the new building and the professional arts building. Even though that's been there a number of years, it's going to get a retrofit on the outside also to make sure that it looks like it was planned together and not a good decade apart. But let me talk a little bit about programming, if you will. So we have a lot of programs that are served out of COA Dare. We try to keep as many of our program offerings down here as we can, keep students from driving. So one of the great things that came out of the pandemic, I agree with whoever said, isn't it nice to be back together? Amen. It is nice to be back together. But we also got better at distance learning, serving students at a distance using technology. So we're investing quite a bit of money into upgrading our instructional technologies, upgrading our IT cybersecurity infrastructure, upgrading some of the general basic stuff like water fountains that you never think about until there's a pandemic. So we're going to see the latest, greatest technology in our new building, but also spread throughout the other parts of COA. So in this area, we obviously have a number of associate degrees, arts, engineering, fine arts, and theater, et cetera, that you can at least get started with face-to-face courses and then many times finish the degree at our COA Dare location through distance learning, hybrid learning, et cetera. And another thing I'm particularly excited about is you may have heard that the governor has announced some new opportunities for funding for community college students or university students in general. So we've got a couple of new opportunities that we're going to be advertising that will allow students to come for free. And I will tell you, though, that COA Dare has already had that opportunity because of the Dare County's Dare Guarantee. So what we're going to be doing is asking the board of commissioners to expand that program so more people can come to more programs for zero out-of-pocket cost. And I think that's going to be huge for building Dare County, making sure that we have as many of our students, as we were talking to Commissioner Gray a little bit ago, as many of our students as possible staying in Dare County and being educated here, free, so that we can continue to build the economy of Dare and surrounding areas. But we have a lot of scholarship opportunities available across our platform, but especially down here in Dare County, as we have a, just a huge philanthropic community, as you all know, that want to support all things COA, all things scholarship, all things student. We also, we have our COA Cares Program, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. We're going to, I think, see the fundraising of colleges change if we have the free community college programs at the national level, as being talked about in Washington right now. But it's not just money for school, for tuition, for fees, for books that keep students from coming. It's getting back and forth to campus, having a reliable automobile, making sure that they can afford childcare, making sure that they have reliable housing and reliable food sources. Food insecurity and housing insecurity are huge. We have a program called COA Cares where we have been fundraising around that for a few years. We have an opportunity, we hope, fingers crossed, that we can endow some of that in the coming months so that we can help students with those needs that arise. And we can help them pay part of a power bill or help them get some care for their children or whatever the case may be. So we continue working credit programs, workforce development certifications. We're working right now to bring some dental assisting to Dare County through part of our continuing education program, maybe using physical therapy assistance programs through our continuing education programs. And that will all be housed out of our COA Dare location. In Currituck, we have some anchor programs of aviation system technology, computerated drafting, computer integrated machining. Edenton Chuan, we have a new truck driver training program. I don't know if you've seen what truck drivers are making now and the bonuses that they're getting. I was thinking about maybe teaching university courses if I ever retire, and I'm thinking I might drive a truck. I might need to figure out how to get in this thing while I'm still the college president and learn to drive this truck so that I have something that is a good paying job when I finish this gig. And the reality is, you might be able to make more driving a truck these days, especially with the high knees area of petroleum delivery. Not kidding. You know, there are some incredible amounts of money being thrown around to people who have the ability and willingness to drive these products long distance. And one of the anchor programs that we have in Elizabeth City is cosmetology. So you see, we have a huge swath of programming, career and technical. I'll just put some of these up, everything from drone to pool and spa to certified nursing assistants here in Dare County. And I'm going to flip through some of this because I know I'm preaching to the choir in this because we are trying to educate HVAC maintenance technicians, building, construction trades, workers, plumbers, et cetera. And we're doing well if we can get them a few courses and get them some certification and get them out in the world. So we have a lot going on for professional jewelry and other things. But I'm going to leave the contact information of our local folks, including Dean Sweeney up here. And I promise I do allow Dean Sweeney to talk from time to time. He knows most of you all. I'm just meeting many of you. But he handed you an impact statement that we have started to produce this year so that when we go out and do these kinds of introductions to COA Dare, remind you all that we're here. If you have any suggestions on what you'd like to see in this as the first iteration, we'll do this every year, of how many students we serve, what kind of scholarship dollars were given out, how much money was saved by students coming to the community college before going on for their university degrees. And with all of that, that's pretty quick, but asking a president to talk for 10 or 15 minutes is tough. So I hope I kept within that timeframe. Do you have any questions of me or Dean Sweeney that we can address while we're here?
Just to say that my daughter just finished the nursing program over there. And I hope you're able to get a BSN program over there so she can follow up with that. But she was thoroughly pleased and very excited to be able to participate in that. It was a big plus because she was going to Cape Fear, and she was able to cancel her apartment down there and come home and save a lot of money.
And attend the number one nursing program in North Carolina at COA.
And do you know who number two is? It's Duke.
So we're quite proud of the nursing program. We had our largest graduating class in the 61-year history of the college. And congratulations to your daughter for being part of that. We know she has a bright future. Yes, ma'am?
Just, I'm assuming not. But was childcare, is childcare part of the new building or not?
Childcare. No, we have some pro, some courses.
You're talking about early childhood?
Yeah, just including a child. I know a lot of community colleges have, you know, small child cares on site.
Okay, yeah. The early childhood program is online and via Zoom. So it's on all the campuses. But no, no child, no children running around. Not yet. Not yet. Sorry, I.
Maybe future.
You're looking at some teaching opportunities with that degree. Let us know. There you go.
I would just like to see more childcare opportunities down here.
I have a son that is dual-rolled, just graduating this year for first flight. Was appreciative of being able to take college level courses as a dual-rolled high school student. So thanks for all you do in all those areas. Super excited about your new building. It's really going to change the kind of look and feel of that part of Manio. And we're all proud of what y'all are accomplishing and are giving back to the community. And really, it's going to, it's really exciting time for COA. So great time to be here.
Thank you. If there's anything we can ever do for you, please let us know.
Likewise, anything we can do for you, you let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next presentation is from my man, Dave Malik, National Park Service. So good to see you without a mask.
Great to see you as well. I'm ready to go back to college after that.
It does.
Talk at the right time, right?
Right.
Thanks for inviting me. It's great to be with you all tonight. Just a brief update of what's been happening within your national parks. And then I also want to thank some folks in Killah Hills. So a brief reminder, national parks of eastern North Carolina, you should all be proud, between Wright Brothers, Fort Raleigh, Cape Hatteras Seashore, Cape Lookout National Seashore, and Morse Creek National Battlefield. You've got some amazing national parks here in eastern North Carolina. And Cape Hatteras and Cape Lookout actually make up over 40% of the coast of North Carolina. And within the national parks of eastern North Carolina, I supervise the three parks up here and also oversee the operations at Cape Lookout and Morse Creek. So we'll talk a little bit about the parks in the northern side. I wanted to give you an update on some little facts and figures. Last year, even with the pandemic, we had over 3 million visits, 117,000 overnight campers. That's more people than visit most national parks just in our four campgrounds. We issued 91 special use permits. Most of those were wedding permits. People still got married despite the pandemic. 29 commercial use authorizations. These are essentially business permits to do business in the parks. We have reached over 1,100 distance learning students from around the country, despite the fact that they weren't able to come here because of travel restrictions. We have hunting, actually, at Cape Hatteras National Seashore. That's a rare thing for a national park, 20 walk-in lines south of Whalebone Junction, and we registered 533 hunters last fall. We also issued almost 48,000 off-road vehicle permits. We have a very large program, and this was the largest number of permits ever issued. Last year, we operated with about 80 staff and about 80 seasonal staff that also came in to supplement our operations during the summer, thousands of volunteer hours. You may know this, we work very closely with Dana and your team here and the Dare County Sheriff's Office. We have a full federal law enforcement program. Last year, we received over 2,800 calls from service from dispatch for anything that you can imagine or don't want to imagine. Some other interesting facts, we have five visitor centers, 200 public toilets. We make water at two places, including Fort Raleigh and the Frisco Campground, 60 septic systems, almost 85 parking lots, 230 buildings, three airstrips, including one across the street. And last year, we took out 270 tons of trash. We're continuing to do this on about a $15 million budget, with about 10 million coming from Congress annually, and another five coming from fees, everything from entrance fees at Wright Brothers to off-road vehicle permits to lighthouse climbing fees. So last year, Cape Hatteras Seashore was remarkable. We had the busiest year in 17 years. It's interesting, when I talk to a lot of my colleagues at other national parks, they had a real down year, in some cases, the lowest level of visitor activity seen in a while. And interestingly, out of 423 national parks, Cape Hatteras Seashore was the 22nd busiest in 2020. So you all know this, but people flocked, not just to their national parks, but here. Fort Raleigh National Historic Site, that is not an error. That last bar on the right, we saw the lowest number of visitors ever seen at Fort Raleigh since we've been keeping records. Wright Brothers also saw the lowest number that we've seen in a long time, just under 300,000 visits. That being said, we are off to a very busy start. This is year-to-date at Wright Brothers, just across the street. And we're looking to have the busiest first several months of the year that we've had in more than a decade. And you've probably seen that driving by. A lot of other exciting things going on. We had a scalper wash-up driven by, I guess I should use the word captain, captained by an individual that didn't have much experience and was sleeping while his mate took the wheel late at night. And this has become a tourist attraction, but it is marine debris. late at night, and this has become a tourist attraction, but it is marine debris and something we are looking to remove from the beach just south of Ranford and north of Oregon Inlet. We had a lot of challenges. We had many people that bought offer vehicle permits that never actually turned the knob in their car from 2H to 4H or drove it off-road that got in some trouble. It was an educational moment almost every day or every hour at Cape Hatteras Seashore. We also had long lines to get into places like the visitor center at Wright Brothers, where we limited the number of attendees due to COVID, and the parking issue you see there is at Fort Raleigh National Historic Site at the end of Pear Pad Road. This became a really popular beach destination last summer. Lot of offer vehicle permit sales. This last winter was the first year that we kept the Oregon Inlet and Ocracoke Campgrounds open all winter, and Oregon Inlet was very, very busy. We reached a lot of visitors over the last year through virtual experiences. We did what we could using media and Teams and Zoom and all the other technology that you've been using. We continue to have our number one challenge related to erosion and sea level rise. That's the foundation of a fence for the original Cape Hatteras Lighthouse that was uncovered, and you see a lifeguard stand out in the ocean. We completed a sediment management framework in EIS. That's a fancy way of explaining a programmatic beach nourishment plan that will allow us to more quickly issue permits to NCDOT or Dare County or Hyde County if they feel a need to implement beach nourishment to protect the highway or other infrastructure. I mentioned sea level rise. This is a serious, serious issue that we are very focused on. This is a graph from the Oregon Inlet Fishing Center, which is Cape Hatteras Seashore property, and you don't need to be an oceanographer to see that over time, that line, despite its ups and downs, high tide, low tide, big storm, windy conditions, is going up. It's a statistically significant rise. It represents half of a centimeter, 5.3 millimeters per year, and that's 1.75 feet over 100 years. This rate of sea level rise is expected to increase dramatically over the next 30 years with a possibility of another 2/10 of a meter to more than 1 meter just by 2050. So we're taking this very seriously and starting to really look at adaptation plans for all of our facilities. Here's an example of a science that we're using to make better decisions. If any of you know Danny Couch, that's Danny Couch standing on a piece of broken asphalt at the old site of the Frisco Pier the day after Hurricane Florence came through. We purchased this parking lot for the, with the goal of making this a beach parking area and installing a bathroom. And I remember looking at Danny that day and the two of us saying, probably not a good idea. As a matter of fact, right now, the waves are consistently breaking really at what would be the edge of the parking area. So recently, we've conducted a really in-depth erosion analysis of the seashore from Whalebone Junction to the tip of Ocracoke. Don't worry too much about this graphic, but that arrow is pointing to the parking lot, right where Danny was standing. The black line represents today's high tide line. The yellow line represents our prediction based on a scientific research project that we just had published of where the shoreline will be in 10 years, and the red line shows where it will be in 20 years. So we use these data and these predictions to decide not to rebuild that parking lot. And we went down the street to the Frisco parking area that many of you have probably been to, and we will add the 40 spaces there. And as you can see from the projections, it's not going to be safe forever, but we think this will be a good investment for the next 20 years. And we're happy to share these methods that we've been using for decision-making in our analyses with the town, if that's at all useful. Oregon Inlet Fishing Center, we just completed and sent a press release out today. We'll be doing a complete renovation of the fishing center with our lessy, including new buildings that will be 11 feet above the ground surface and parking and fueling improvements. Wright Brothers General Management Plan. We amended our strategic plan for Wright Brothers National Memorial, and just some examples of things that we plan to do. We noted that we would work with the town of Kill Devil Hills and NCDOT on a multi-use path all along 158 to connect Landing with Collington and continue that pathway. We also have plans for a multi-use path around the memorial landscape. Another example of a, of a project we plan to implement is an educational pavilion that would allow us to host large school groups out of the weather. Last year was the 150th anniversary of the lighting of the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse, and we're in the midst of a very large lighthouse restoration project. I could talk to you for an hour just about that, but very exciting project and really fitting for the US's tallest brick lighthouse. We'll be opening up the Bonner Bridge Pier. This is 1,000 feet of remnant Bonner Bridge Pier that is on Park Service property as a recreational facility sometime later this summer or early fall. We're doing this in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. This 1,000 feet of remnant bridge is a current training device. It's meant to push the current out into the open channel. A big project to help preserve the Ocracoke Light Station, which is exciting, and a sea level rise adaptation project. We protected 228 sea turtle nests last year and over 480 shorebird nests. We have a new mobile app. Check it out. It's really easy to use. We're typically a little behind the times on technology, but I'll say that this is a really good tool and has a lot of great visitor information. No year, I don't know if this is going to work for me. Can you see if you could hit play on this? No year is complete without a bomb on the beach, and we had a bomb on the beach near the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse. The area is known as Torpedo Junction because of all of the activity that's gone on there over the last half of a century, and it was so significant that when the Navy came to help us, they said they couldn't remove it and they had to detonate it on site. We also had, just across the street this year, and still have Cassie, the Connected Autonomous Shuttle Supporting Innovation. This is a partnership with NCDOT and the Volpe Institute. That is a self-driving shuttle. It has radar, LiDAR. It's incredible. If you have a chance to get on it, it's our future, and we see the possible long-term use of a shuttle like this to provide tours around the landscape and to help folks get around, especially those who have mobility challenges. It's been working really well. As of this afternoon, we have 2,178 riders. It's the first autonomous shuttle deployed in the national park. So now I just want to thank you all. If you can give me a moment, thank you, Steve, for coming. The pathway, the multi-use path across the street is just incredible. This is something I believe it was built in 1996 originally by the town of Kill Devil Hills in partnership with the Park Service, and Steve came to us recently, said it's time to redo this. And a couple of notes on that, if we had redone it, it would have cost a lot more. We wouldn't have done it as quickly. I'm not sure it would have looked as nice. So tonight, I just want to make a special thank you first to Steve. This is a cert, this is really minor, and thank you, Steve, for coming. A certificate of appreciation awarded to Steve Albright and the Town of Kill Devil Hills Public Services Director for your dedication and stewardship of Wright Brothers National Memorial. Thank you so much. And Steve is so modest. He was pointing out immediately that really this was the Board of Commissioners that supported this project. So thank all of you for the generous funding that you made available and for, for the town hall. We have a plaque that we made for all of you. It says, "United States Department of Interior, National Park Service, in appreciation to the town of Kill Devil Hills for your partnership and stewardship of Wright Brothers National Memorial, June 2021." And I want to thank Jess Green with Adderbanks Forever for helping to make these small tokens of our appreciation available to all of you.
Let me come up here. Do a little photo for us.
Great.
Where should we be out here? I'll squeeze out this way. Come over here.
Sure.
It's cozy, cozy crowd. Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
Post-COVID anxious.
Right. I love it. Appreciate it.
Absolutely great.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Happy to take any questions if you have.
Questions? Super excited about Cassie.
Yes, Cassie's so cool.
Yes.
I have a quick question about the ORB permits. That, you said in the Board of Tourism meeting, I think it was up 40% from the year before. I know you said it was 48, almost 48,000.
Almost 48,000, yeah. So I think last year, we had, uh...
Maybe not quite 48,000.
Yeah, so it, there's two things. You can calculate them from our fiscal year or calendar year, but I would say the number of permits are up by approximately 10%.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, but, but still, when we started the permit program in 2012, we sold 27,000, and then it went up to about 30, and then 32, and then 38. And I don't think we ever imagined that we would be approaching almost 50,000.
No, that's what, is, would there ever be a cap considered?
Uh, we're not considering a cap. Actually, the offer vehicle permit program, there's a special regulation that allows offer vehicles that we put forward in the Code of Federal Regulations. It has a carrying capacity based on the number of vehicles on a beach. So in theory, while we wouldn't limit the number of permits per se, we can limit the number of vehicles on a, on a route.
Okay. I guess that's probably my, more my concern really than the total number of permits.
Yeah. It's very busy on the beaches.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Hallock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, that's that time. Before you go, we have, yeah, go ahead. I'd like to make one quick statement. I am skipping ahead a little bit, but I just want to express my excitement for the First Flight Market at Aviation Park. Yes, it's definitely a delight, and I bet you stepford, you're doing a great job, and many others, and I apologize, but usually we're not doing that. Sometimes things come up that we can't, can't avoid. He's got another engagement he's got to get to, but in order to make sure that we don't assume your vote in your absence, there's a motion we need to make, and it is to say, help me here.
Could there be a motion by the Board if they'd so entertained to excuse a question?
Excuse him, that's the word. If we excuse him by a motion, then we won't be assuming what his votes are in future states. So I'll make that motion. We have a motion to excuse you from the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're going to ask you, sir. Thank you for being here as long as you could.
Phil will be there soon.
Item number one, which is KDAK Town Code Amendments mandated by NC General Assembly, reorganization statutes mainly related to the local planning and development regulations in general statutes. We have Chapter 10, General Provisions, Chapter 30, Board of Commissioners, Chapter 31, Boards and Committees. The, get to the right page here. So we have looked at this before. We've got public hearings scheduled for June 20. I made it on the wrong page here.
This is part of the 160D regulations, and this is the town code chapters that do not require public hearings.
Okay.
So the board can act on these three chapters without required public hearing, but it's still part of the 160D amendments to come in compliance with the North Carolina general statute changes.
Right.
So it just doesn't require a public hearing because it's not in the language section of our town code. So it would just require board action.
Jumping ahead to the other one.
Yes, sir.
So we just, looking for a motion.
I'll make a, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'll move to approve the proposed amendments, Chapter 10, General Provisions, Chapter 30, Board of Commissioners, Chapter 31, Boards and Committees, and move to amend as presented.
Excellent.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Considering that, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Brings us to new business. We received some outlines in your packet, and I think Meredith will take your questions or give us a summary for the, kind of for the poll.
I'd be happy to give you all a quick summary.
Just hit the high points.
The first light, we, we named it, it's up for grabs. Y'all can change it if you'd like to. We had to have something to put at the title, but we named it First Light Market at Aviation Park, and its proposed market would be on Tuesdays from 10 to 2 at Aviation Park. We called the other areas. There is another market on Tuesdays, but it's in Avon, and in talking to the other, some of the vendors, and that it wouldn't be something that would be prohibitive for our market, we would still, it wouldn't be a big competition because of the, the distance. And if the board agrees, we would look at starting it on July 20th, and we would be July 20th, 27th, August 3rd, August 10th, and August 17th. We're stopping at the 17th simply because the 18th starts, the teacher workdays and school starts the next week, and we would lose our overflow parking. Aviation Park doesn't have enough, a big enough parking lot to be able to sustain a market without that overflow school parking. If you look at the information and rules real quick, we would do the applications on a first come, first served basis. We're looking at trying to handle 25. We might be able to bump that up, but right now, we're saying 25. We've asked on the application for the applicant to decide, or to tell us what they're selling so that we can try to diversify the market. So we have a list of produce, eggs, and consumables, textiles, arts, jewelry, candles, seafood, soap and beauty products. We're also going to be the, allow food trucks. We're a little skeptical that we're going to get food trucks in July. Restaurants are super busy, short-staffed.
They're trying to get local ones right now, just.
Right, right. And, but there are some food vendors that don't have storefronts that fully depend on these types of events. So we might get, we might get some food trucks, but we are going to allow food trucks. And we've asked for everything to be homegrown, home-baked, homemade, so that we don't get the commercialized pampered chef or something like that, that we get local art and local jewelry and local food and, and things like that to truly make it a unique market. We're keeping the price extremely low this season because we're only doing five runs, and it's going to be $50, and we're not offering it by the week. It's the $50, and if you can't come, we would be able to go, if we have a waitlist, and invite a waitlistee to come in and pay 10, but we're asking for the full season because it's only five weeks, and we're only charging $10 a week, which is by far the cheapest market that we feel like we need to get our feet wet, make sure we understand it, make sure that we get vendors that are happy, that want to come back, that want to be there. So that's, that's how we plan to, to do that. And if the board likes this or wants to change it, as soon as y'all give us the go-ahead, we will be releasing the applications so that we can get them in hopefully by, what did we say, the end of June, last, the 30th of June, so that we can sort them by category and do the first come, first served, give them plenty of notice that they've got a spot. And we work with buildings and grounds. We've met with Paige Griffin, who runs the Nags Head Market, which is a much bigger market. I think they have 75 vendors. It's a goal. And if this goes well, we would be coming back to you about possibly doing a holiday market, and that holiday market, if the stars and the moon line up right, might be able to be at Meekins Field.
Right.
Which provides a very big parking lot.
And you're thinking weekday for that or weekend?
Uh, haven't gotten there yet. We wanted to see how this, this five weeks goes because that would be in November, so we'd have time to regroup, see what we did right, see what we needed to improve on, and then look for a full season in 2022.
Start basically right after school left out, I guess.
We'd start right after school left out, and then we've also talked about if Meekins is done, making it at Meekins.
Oh, right. Want some more capacity?
It, it's got the capacity, and it's also on the bypass. So it would have a little bit more visibility. But that's all up for grabs depending on how this five weeks goes. Right now, we're focused on what we've put in front of you guys in the application for this five-week market, and hopefully it'll be a huge success and we'll be able And hopefully, it'll be a huge success and we'll be able to make this into a bigger thing.
Super.
So answer any questions you have. Charlene's also met with Paige and that's what we--
Did you get a chance to talk to Amy and Buffy anymore or they ghosted you?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Yes.
Could they, were sent in?
This, this, this market, the, the truck, the, the school bus probably wouldn't fit in this market. She would--
Okay, right.
As a vendor in a 10 by 10 tent. But with the parking limitations, the bus would not be something that would qualify for this particular market. And she also doesn't make her own goods.
Oh, right, right.
So there, there's some, but her, she does have her own stuff. And she would be well within the parameters for a 10 by 10 space inside the market.
Right, right.
As far as if they make their own goods or don't, I mean, you don't want them to have a mix even, just you want them to be pure, make your, make your own goods offered. You don't want them to have a mix of make your own slash. I mean, some vendors might have--
We're not, we're moved away from the commercialization--
Yeah.
--of the market because that's, from the people we've spoken to, that's not what brings people to a market. They want the unique gifts and not the, the pampered chef or the-- And I use that as an example because that's something people do.
No, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Or Yankee Candle or, or something like that. They want something that's made here and that's, that would be the attraction.
Certainly in agreement with it. But what I'm trying to say is, are you, if, if, is someone going to police that or is like if they start to, if they start to, or if they start to sell half their goods or commercially?
We would have to talk with them.
Okay.
We'll have staff out there that checks people in and monitors the rules. We're not planning on a lot of staff. And talking to Nags Head and Manio, they have one person and it goes well. People are very respectful of, of being able to do it. And also, they're not afraid to tell, tell us or in Nags Head, tell Nags Head that someone's not following the rules.
I got you. So, and we can--
It's all policing.
Well, because it makes it not attractive.
Right, right.
That's, they, they want the purity of, of what they do.
Everybody agrees in those rules, yeah.
So we're afraid to like revoke someone's--
Absolutely. And we also have a liability statement that Casey is, is going to review, that they'll sign if they are the first come, first served. When that list is complete, they'll have to sign a liability statement that takes liability and, and makes them recognize all the rules that they've agreed to and that will have a revocation statement in it if they do not follow the rules.
And the, my last question was, do you, does it take a lot of town staffing for this? How much would you say?
We're, we're hoping it's going to be one person.
One.
It's going to be a couple of us with the applications because we're simply learning. But Nags Head uses one person and it's a contract person that, that they use, that we may be looking towards that type of person next year versus--
Your time employee.
Yeah. But for now, it's Charlene, myself, Donna Elliott, and Rachel. They're kind of, kind of all together.
See how it goes the first year, yeah. So it's more of a--
Thank you guys for putting so much time into it.
Charlene, do you have anything to add?
Very cool and exciting. I think you've covered everything. Just any additional things that you all wanted as far as guidance for us?
Have you had discussions about marketing budget or marketing techniques other than just the usual press release stuff?
Well, I know that Nags Head, Instagram and Facebook has worked well for them--
Both for them, yeah.
To where they haven't had to spend a lot of, of marketing budget there.
Okay.
And Paige was nice enough to say that if we created a flyer about our market, that she would release it to her vendors and also put it on their page that we have a market on Tuesdays.
Oh, nice.
Because it's not direct competition. It'll also let the vendors know that we're accepting applications for our market. So she's been, I would say, more than super helpful.
Super, yeah. Awesome. We'll all try to help get the word out too. I just want it to be successful for us in front of the vendors because you only have one chance at a first impression. The, the other thought I had was, and I don't know how it really feels about this, whether or not there was any appetite or interest in corporate sponsorship, i.e. XYZ Bank presents Aviation Day at Kill Devil Hills, and maybe they would throw some money behind, you know, marketing, whether it be print, radio, TV.
We feel like the radios are going to take it and--
Just talk about it as a public service.
Public service announcement and we're hoping the Voice will also--
That'll get a lot of people--
As our first time run and let--
It's newsworthy.
--know about a community event because it's a town event.
But I agree, you could probably, you know, it's a future date, maybe the next year to look for sponsorship.
We're hoping it's not going to cost the town any money.
That'd be great. I was, I was thinking about--
That's the goal. They have, they have to, they have to provide their own tent there. Nags Head did a grant to get a couple extra tents for people that didn't have one. They can, they can first come, first served basis. That would be something we'd look into if this was successful, but it is a fully self-reliant. And in looking at Nags Head, the people that are in Nags Head Interior, you're one of them, those people have it wired. They know exactly what they're doing. They've got all their mess. They, they know--
Got to dial the--
They have it dialed in. They have, they have exactly what they want and they know how they want to present it. They, they have their own squares and Venmo and PayPal and cash. I mean, they, they've got it all. It was, it was really impressive. They were businesses under tents.
And we did.
You had a good time, didn't you?
I did. And I got introduced to microgreens. Who didn't? They're delicious.
Think you grown yourself, yeah.
I know.
I think, I like the First Flight Market.
Sure.
I like that, that name. And I think staff's done an outstanding job of putting together this, this packet. I support 510.
Yeah, it's a really great, great amount of work. I think we're well on our way. I will add that the paper, a lot of people like paper, but I've switched my company to JotForm for things like this. JotForm is as easy as typing it up like this. It's a platform where once people fill it out, they fill it out on their phone, it sort of auto-populates, makes it really easy to fill out. You can ask any question you want. You have checkboxes, yes, no, all that stuff. But on the receiving side, it comes in a dashboard that's sortable and you can output it with any column that you want and export to Excel. So there'll be no more reading it, typing it in. You could set it up however you move those columns around. It's a really great platform. It's totally free. So hopefully it would save a lot of administrative time.
Does it timestamp?
Timestamps everything.
Okay.
You can sort by--
Because we, we actually had a very large discussion about only accepting electronic applications so that we could have the timestamp because we're doing first come, first served.
Right.
We didn't want some dropping it in the drop box at 10 o'clock at night. And you come back the next morning and there's five in there and you go, whoa, okay.
We did what?
So we really spent a lot of time talking about the electronic form and, and really requiring it be some little more electronic form.
Right. You can offer folks who are like, you know, technology averse, that you can help them use the form, like if somebody came--
Well, we can also do a PDF fillable that they can email is what we were looking at, but we'd definitely look at the JotForm.
Well, look at JotForm because it's easy to just send somebody the link and they just upgraded the interface last year and it's just beautifully designed and easy to use.
Thank you.
My company used to do paper applications for cleaners, when trying to hire 200, 300 cleaners a year. And they did it all with paper. I said, oh, we're going to fix this. And we went from taking in 200 or 300 paper ones to like 1,500 in the last two years of electronic applicants. So it really streamlined and allowed them to spend more time calling people and, you know, making offers and hiring people. So everything saves a minute here, it gives you a minute there, right? So worth trying out. Super. Well, you've got in-house graphics, marketing, you ready to, you know, make a pretty logo and stuff?
We're working on it.
All right. I'm looking forward to that too. Well, thanks so much for all the hard work. Any other questions for the--
We would just need y'all to give us the, the go-ahead to release the--
You have our consensus. Would we like a vote on that? Or is it good enough? Do you like it?
Just got it. Casey says yes.
Just, yeah, let's make--
Make it official. So--
So you're looking for a motion to approve the first flight market?
To move forward with the first market as--
I'll make that motion.
--as, as presented.
In a second. We got a motion and a second. And any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Super. Thanks again for all the hard work. That's great to see them moving forward and, or you got bigger steps. We'll do a trail running and it'll be ahead, I'm sure. All right. Committee reports is the next item on the agenda. Anybody have--
We've already--
Summertime tends to lighten up a bit. All right, mate. Commissioners' agenda, you want to start now?
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners' agenda.
I just want to call out Terry or recognize him. So he received an award. The whole North State was more excited by the governor. And so just my friend Jed Dixon gave, gave up to him and I just want to make mention of that.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. It was an honor. I was very grateful to get that.
It's very cool.
Congratulations.
And then you've got a picture there.
Last thing you needed on your wall, but it's cool that you got it.
Well, it's, you've got one wall to sling. But my ex-boss nominated me for that, Jed Dixon.
Yeah.
With a fairy vision and I was very honored to, to receive the award. Very nice.
Thank you. I've quite the career. Thank you for all your work over the years. And congratulations again.
Thank you.
If that's all the Commissioners' agenda, I've got a couple of items here for the Mayor's Agenda. On the happy note, I can toot my own horn that I have a graduate from high school, but I'd also like to rep, to recognize a lot of other folks here in the town have offspring that are graduating this year, including Maya Britt, who's the daughter of Gary Britt, Flynn Cooper, who's the son of Phoebe Cooper, Will Rupke, who's the son of Frank Rupke, Henry Stecker, that's Jennifer's son, Bella Smith, that's John's son, Jude Sproul, imagine where he came from. Madison Sudif, which is the daughter of Mike Sudif, and Tyler Sylvia, that's Judy Long's son, I assume.
Right, I assume.
So we also have a couple of college graduates. Nina Perry, daughter of Derek Dale, is graduating from Concord University. And Berkeley Sylvia, the daughter of Jody Long, is graduating from University of Greensboro. So we wish all the best to these young people and congratulate them and their families at this exciting annual year.
And your son was salutatorian.
Yeah. Wow, how about that? Salutatorian and--
Go back and watch his speech.
His speech was wonderful.
Great speech.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Made Dad super nervous because he wouldn't tell me if he ever started it and never showed me a draft. And as far as I could tell, that school had not made him run it by them until the last thing.
And made Mom cry with the extra shout-out.
Oh, the extra shout-out to Mom was, wow. It's like out of the movies, right? Definitely left a few less dry eyes in the crowd.
Don't Ben, I was crying, it's not even my kid.
I have it too.
I was like, I wonder if Ben would have--
All mine, just what it is. Yep. Well, something else, that's something else. So that's what I have there. And the town manager, or I'm sorry, the assistant town manager is sitting in. Anything for us today?
Nothing.
And that puts us onto Page Two. Town attorney, anything for us, sir?
Oh, God, nothing, nothing, guys. Thank you very much.
All right. Our assistant town manager will lead us through the consent agenda. Shows a couple of items on it.[1626.02]